You know, so we can talk more about animals.
Yeah.
So, I try not to, I don't wanna, you know.
I started that one.
Is that?
All right.
Okay. If I could ask everyone to silence their cell phones, please. And shall we rise?
We're recording progress.
Okay, shall we rise to the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good morning, everyone. Um, gentlemen, we have minutes of a meeting held on June 6th. Could I have a motion?
Uh, move them.
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Second page. There you go, you got the second page. Put all that together, bein' for you, Sonny. There you go, last page. Okay, we're gonna start with new business this morning. Um, and this is in regards to a letter that we see from a resident on Gray Rocks Road. Um, they're requesting that we pave that road. Um, is there someone here in regards to that that would like to speak? If you'd like to come to the microphone and just introduce yourself.
It's on, is it on?
Yeah, it is.
Uh, Clay Dunn.
Okay.
I know Sonny, John.
How you doing, Clay?
Uh, Ruth, I don't know if you're related to Mark, but he worked for my father fifty years ago.
Oh, yeah. Has him. I guess I had, I'll admit that, this morning.
Yeah, my dad was red done. Um, there's two, I don't know what you want first, there's some reasons to pave Gray Rocks Road, and then I wanted to give you some general specifics on what it would cost. Obviously, if you did decide to do something, you would get estimates, and, but I could give you a general, a general idea of what you're looking at.
Mm-hmm.
Would you like the generality first?
Yes, go ahead.
Okay, so Gray Rocks is approximately a little less than a half a mile. It's, do you all know where Gray Rocks is?
I was the only house on, year-round house on Gray Rocks Road for fifteen years.
Okay, all right. Um, it goes past the Winter Swamp Campground. There's a section, a couple of tents before the bridge that they did ten or fifteen years ago, they did a new bridge over the train. Um, and there's another three tents down to the bottom where Breck Shore Road is paved, where you go down to the lake houses, uh, where all the mailboxes is. That, that section is mostly paved. So, it's a little less than a half a mile, is twenty-five hundred feet, give or take, and it's fifteen mile an hour, most of it. The first section up to the campground is twenty miles an hour, then it changes to fifteen miles per hour. So, we would only want eighteen feet wide, which is a lot less than the twenty, twenty-four feet on, on the busy city streets. Uh, number one, you don't really have room for, for the ditches if you go more than eighteen feet, and then you get into a big expense with excavating them. So, at eighteen feet, where the traffic's only fifteen miles per hour, it would be a little easier pavement job. The gravel base is, looks very sufficient. There would be some minor ditch work on, on the, uh, west side into the bank with some three to six erosion stone with just a little bit of ditch work, which, I don't know if this gentleman's with the, the Department of Public Works, but they do a nice job with the rip, rip rap ditches. So, at twenty-five hundred feet, at eighteen feet wide is five thousand square yards. At eleven ton, you know, per hundred square yards is approximately five hundred and fifty, let's say six hundred ton. I'm thinking today it's around a hundred and twenty-five dollars a ton, is, you're looking at around seventy-five thousand dollars, give or take, to pave the road, plus maybe a little bit of ditch work. So, we're not talking two, three, four hundred thousand. It's still a lot of money, but for the area, I, I think it would be worthwhile.
Is this a private road?
No, it's, it's a-
Gray Rocks is a town.
It turns to, um, private at Breck, Breck Shore Road.
And how many homes are on that?
Twenty-one.
On that stretch?
Um, where, where it goes, where it leaves Gray Rocks Road and goes on-
How many, how many homes on Gray Rocks?
Oh, Gray Rocks, um, um, three or four?
Three.
Three, okay. The, um, there's an additional twenty-one, you have to travel over Gray Rocks to get, so maybe you'd say twenty-four, twenty-four homes. So, again, if you did decide to do it, you'd, you'd get estimates, but I just wanted to give you a general idea of what you're, what you're looking at. Give or take seventy-five thousand dollars, probably. So, um, Elizabeth lives at the bottom of Gray Rocks Road. She's deaf, deaf, and, um, her sister's disability, and they, they struggle, they struggle, um, along with everybody else. We have letters that we wanna present to the city. And I know some people, they like to gravel this, and it only takes one, one maybe for the, the board to say, "Oh, jeez, I would love to pave it," but there's one person down in the back corner that likes all the dust and dirt, and afraid it's gonna bring too much travel onto the road, which, ten years ago, they paved the intersection coming off Union Road, which was a big help. It would rain and wash the silt, there's a ditch down there that would wash the, so they control the drainage a lot better. I think they came up around a hundred feet by, um, eighteen feet wide, plus some swales on the ditches. If any other questions, when I'm finished, I'd be happy to answer some questions. Um, so the reasons to pave it is gravel holds ice and moisture a lot more than asphalt. The asphalt is gonna melt the sun and drain off, and it's not gonna create, gravel is a, is an impervious surface, same as, same as asphalt. I mean, once it's packed down, the water's not, is not draining through the gravel, it's, it's, it's going, so it's not gonna create more drainage issues by paving it than keeping it gravel. The gravel is compacted, and it doesn't, it doesn't absorb the rainwater. All it does is wash some of the silt, silt down. So, the gravel is much more slippery, it holds moisture in the wintertime, and is, is a lot slipperier than what asphalt would be. It does go through the, a little bit more of a thaw with the mud, um, mud season. We do find that the, um, um, the base is, is good on that road. Um, in the past, they would put gravel on it when it was slippery, and I called the town, and I said, "You know, if you just use inch and a half crushed stone and not use the gravel," because it hasn't, gravel has a mixture of sand in it, I think you probably know. Um, so it was, it was a little muddy, so for a couple of years, they just put inch and a half stone, and that worked its way into the, the gravel and just made it a, a stronger, stronger base and get rid of, get rid of the mud. Um, it does get very dusty in the summertime. Obviously, it's hard to, we, we have white cars because it doesn't show the dirt as much, it'd be impossible to have a black, keep a black car clean on that, on that road. My wife says the town would actually save money by paving it with the maintenance. They grade, they grade the road half a dozen times a year. As everywhere on different, like such as Governor's Island or different places, everywhere, there's a lot of places that become year-round, in the past three, three or five years, there's been four additional houses that are year-round on that road. The, the, uh, water department has a, um, pumping station down there, they're down there every day on Chestnut. Chestnut and Walnut and Breck Shore Road, those are the three roads that are off from Gray Rocks Road. Breck Shore is the main road that goes to a dead end. Chestnut would be the first road on the left where the water pumping, uh, excuse me, sewer pumping station is, and then the second left is Walnut. And it's about seven houses on each road, seven on Breck, seven on Walnut, and seven on Chestnut. Anything else I can say to convention paper?
You wanna donate a hundred grand?
Um, who said a hundred? I thought you said seventy-five.
Yeah, I'll give or take a little.
Okay.
I do remember that.
Um, it's a very pretty concrete, I mean, asphalt's seventy-five dollars a ton, I would think these guys would haul and lay it for less than fifty dollars a ton. They, they, it's a, it's a small day's work for them to pave that road, they're probably going in, it's really graded pretty well, but do a little bit of the ditch work and fine grade it, and it would take about four hours to pave, to pave that road. Oh, and when I say pave, when I say paving, I was thinking of a, lay it two and a half inches and have a two-inch binder course on that hill. I don't, I don't think you need a, a base, maybe put another coat on it ten years from now or something, but I, I think a two-inch layer, two and a half inches loose and compacted to two inches with a three-quarter binder course would, would, would be a good job. I have some letters for you, is, can I answer any questions?
Craig, do you have any input on this that you could enlighten us?
I can give you my opinion.
Okay, that, that's what we're here for.
If we're gonna do something like that.
Mr. Dunn, if you'd like to have a seat, and then I'll have Craig come forward, all right? And then we'll go from there.
I mean, so currently, when we reconstruct a road, um, through our subdivision regulations, uh, we're making all our roads twenty-two feet wide.
That was gonna be my first question.
Um, in my opinion, Gray Rocks Road, it's a low-volume road. We require four inches of asphalt, um, on our new roads. There's tree work that needs to be done. To bring it to town specs, it would need guide rail work. I estimate the guide rail work would be between four, just the guide rail work would be between forty-five and fifty thousand dollars. Um, it needs enclosed drainage from the bridge to Union Road to capture that water, because if we're gonna do something, we can't, we can't keep putting the silt and everything across the road. Um, the hill needs some underdrain, there's a, there's a spring on that hill every spring. Like I said, a, an estimate right now to reconstruct a rural gravel road is between two and three million dollars a mile. Now, Gray Rocks, I measured it, it's twenty-four hundred feet. So, the estimate to do that correctly, to put two and a half inches of binder and an inch and a half of top, like we do our normal roads that we reconstruct, is gonna be between a million and a million-five. That's my estimate, I'm not an engineer. We could spend fifteen thousand dollars and have an engineer engineer this road, but that's, that's, there's a lot of work to that road to make it, to make it right. I mean, if you put two and a half inches of mix on it and it doesn't hold up, then what are we doing? We're going back and we're resurfacing it, we're, you know, and, don't get me wrong, I'd love to pave every dirt road in town, that's, that's not my intention to be saying, "I don't think this is a good idea." But we have, as you guys know, we have Old State Road, uh, heavily trafficked dirt road. Rogers Road, the cut-through from one oh seven to Middle Route, um, there's, yeah, a lane drive, that would be, that would be up there, those would be up there on my priority list. And to be honest with you, if we're gonna start doing this and doing gravel roads and upgrading, I think we should probably, you know, double our highway reconstruction fund. You know, we put seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars a year away for our highway reconstruction, and if we're gonna start doing the dirt roads, 'cause, I mean, yeah, that, the road, the road might have, the, the base might be good, but, I mean, it needs test pits, it needs to, you know, it needs select material in certain spots. Like I said, there's a spring in that road, it's just-
Oh, so we end up with the same situation?
Yeah, it's just, not, not that I wouldn't love, I'd love to pave that, I live on a dirt road, I've lived on a dirt road, I live on dirt road right up the road. I mean, but, and I've lived on, I've lived on one for forty years, I mean, it's just, it's, it is what it is. You know, we've got Gardeners Grove, that hill, that, that's, you know, I just don't think, we're not maintaining Gray Rocks a lot, I think, it's just, like I said, it's a dead-end road, it's low-volume, and when you look at Old Route Three or Old State Road and those roads, I think, if we were gonna start anywhere, that would be my opinion, where we, where we would start, so. And I'm sorry, I don't mean to twist up anybody, but from, from my perspective, as far as maintenance, I've been doing this a long time in this town.
So, we got other dirt roads with a little more priority?
Well, I mean, you look at Rogers Road, Sonny, you live on Rogers, look at the traffic we have on Rogers Road, you know, that's-
Oh, yeah, yeah, that, that's getting busy all the time.
And the reason why we haven't done anything with Rogers Road is because if you're gonna do that road, you need to, you bring, need to bring it up to town specs, like with our subdivision rules. You know, you need to, I mean, if we're making other people do this kind of work-
That was my next question, so if someone's-
-to a certain standard, we can't just go in and pave a road eighteen feet wide.
Someone's coming in to have a development, and they want it built and turned over to the town for the town to take over.
Yep.
These, what you're talking about is what they're required to do.
Subdivision rules call for that.
Subdivision rules.
There's no, there's no exception.
And, and I understand what Mr. Dunn is saying, "Well, this is only gonna be eighteen," but then we're, we're going against our own-
Exactly.
...regulations.
And I would hate to put two and a half inches of mix on it, make it eighteen feet wide, and then in four or five years, because we don't know exactly what's underneath the road, you know, we're reclaiming it, we're redoing it, then we're doing the drainage, you know, like we are with Plummer Hill and all the other roads, you know, it's just-
Okay.
So, anyway.
All right.
Hi, can I say something?
Yeah.
Um, I, I know it's a lot of work and everything, but, um, that area used to be a lot of just three-seasoned homes, and now there's a lot more year-round people, and I have supporters here who have been getting stuck and sliding off the road in the spring and winter months, and I didn't know if I could present these letters to you.
Sure.
Um, I, I don't wanna take the time, I don't know if you share and read them.
No, 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 we'll, we'll take those under consideration, that's for sure.
This is from, wow.
Yeah, yeah, all right.
She made the special effort to come to here.
Yes, not a problem.
And then these are from other residents.
Awesome, all right, awesome, we appreciate that. Obviously, you know where we're coming from, eighteen feet doesn't meet our town specs. And again, in order to be able to be spending everyone's tax dollars, everyone's tax dollars in town, we can't be making special exceptions, am I, am I correct?
I would agree with that, and I sat on the planning board in half for twenty years, and I, we can't make, we, we make one exception, the cat's out of the bag.
Um, the reason I say eighteen feet is 'cause that's what it is now.
I understand that, 'cause that's pre-existing.
Do we ask, do we come back and ask the, the town to make it twenty-four feet wide of gravel, or?
Here's what, in my estimation, we have to look at. This year's road construction is done. When I say done, we applied monies to projects that we started two years ago, and as the projects come down, we ask the taxpayers every year for money through our budgetary process. Our monies are allocated this year for projects for this year, but the two, the frost comes as far as rebuilding and doing-
At some point, we have to come and, and make a request, whether it's-
And we then, then the request is gonna be accompanied by, then we're gonna go get an engineering firm to engineer the road, and that's gonna be twenty-five grand, anyway, if not more. And then, then you put a real cost on the road, and they do the cost estimate, and the cost would, if it was gonna be paved, been great to do it ten years ago when asphalt was twenty-five dollars a ton and not seventy-five.
It was thirty-two years ago, I was talking about.
But, I, at this, at this point, we, we review this and look at it and try to prioritize it, but we've gotta come up with the money, we just can't go say we can do this and write a check.
I, I understand that, and I understand there's probably twenty-five reasons not to do it and six reasons, and my wife has put on a banging effort, and I tried to-
Oh, I, I'm not, I'm not disagreeing with you.
No, I tried to let her know what she was up against, but if we're gonna talk numbers, we should talk correct numbers. I've never heard of four inches of asphalt. We can't talk about loose, when it's laid loose, the compacted, I mean, everything is two, two inches of base and an inch of top, the inch of top is laid an inch and a half compacted to an inch, the base is two and a half inches compacted to two, so we can't be talking about four inches of asphalt that's, that the compacted depth of what we're measuring is three inches, unless we're paving a highway that is six, seven inches or whatever. So, if we do talk about, we gotta, but I mean, we gotta-
You know, obviously, we have to meet our reg, our town regulations, and I think, and, and I can't tell you, we had a, um, and now it's slipping, what's it called when we had all of our roads looked at, help me here?
In two thousand seventeen, we had a road assessment.
Thank you.
That's how, that's how we, that's how we gauged how much money-
But we updated it, but we updated it recently. I believe it was updated since two thousand seventeen, the road assessment. Am I right, or am I wrong?
You're wrong.
I'm wrong, okay, I'm wrong.
The prices that we kinda, we kinda put, we don't get estimates from our engineering firm, when the difference between just patching or doing an overlay, as you well know, you're in that business.
As due time.
Yeah, as due time, we put an overlay on, and then some of the other roads, we, we got, we got some plans for Doral Mountain Road, only because we got a gravel pit at the end that we don't own or control, and they're tearing up the road, and there's a lot of houses on that road.
Plummer Hill.
But-
Plummer Hills, we've been waiting for that for like forty years, because-
And now, and we're gonna let it set another year. We put the base on, and with the requisition, past spring, after the base was put on, the road started to heave. So, rather than just say, "Let's finish the other coat," we didn't do that, upon advice from both the engineering firm who engineered it, 'cause they're on the hook for the engineering that it wouldn't happen, and to see what would happen, and we had so much rain last year, it was an unusual winter, before we finished hopping it. Now, they ditched it and all that, but that project on that road was, what's the total cost? One point two?
One point nine.
One point one. And that's, when that's completed, so we've got a plan for this.
Our engineers have recommended, what we do, we, like we book for, this is the next on the roads, we put two and a half inches of binder, and we let it sit for a freeze-thaw cycle. And then in the next year, if everything's going good, we do a tack, a shim with a half inch, and then a tack, and a shim with, with a one-inch over. So, that's, that's what our engineers have designed and speced our roads to be, so that's what we're, that's what we're doing. So, they feel like four inches of mix is gonna hold up a lot better than three or three and a half, so that's, on their recommendation, that's what we've been doing for, um, five or six years.
If the base is correct, four inches is absolutely no difference in three inches, it's, it's the base underneath. But anyways, um, and, and the whole eighteen feet is because of the speed limit and, and what's there now, and, I mean, you could waive that, that's not a big deal, the, the big deal, the big deal is the expense.
But I also think that, I don't know, and I think we have the police chief here, is it, it's, I thought we couldn't do fifteen mile an hour speed limits.
You can't.
And that's what I didn't think we could.
You regulate as low as thirty unless you have a school in on the hospital.
Right, that's what I thought, I'm sure the fifteen is-
Thirty mile an hours, and thirty-five are, and a rule there.
Every rural road is down to thirty mile an hour.
That's what I thought. When you said fifteen, I'm thinking, that sounds like it's a private development.
Only thirty-five we had was being over, and we changed that back to thirty.
Okay.
So, now they're all thirty and more.
All right, so that's what would happen, we would have to change those signs anyways. Yeah.
You can leave, you can leave the-
Illegal signs as they are, I guess.
You could, you could literally leave them there.
I mean, they're twenty-five, right.
And we have, we have a purpose, we can-
But they, they say twenty-five and fifteen right now, but, and it's good to keep the traffic a little slower on, on that.
Absolutely, I agree with that.
Oh, no, I, I, I'm just, you know, I'm thinking to myself, fifteen, how's he getting away with a fifteen mile an hour sign? It's like-
It's down the hill, and it's slippery, and-
The consideration of the people that live there.
Right, of course.
That they don't wanna tear up the road, and they don't wanna make a dust bowl out of it anymore than they have to.
Yeah.
Yeah.
All right, well, I appreciate your time, I, I knew she was-
We will put it on our list.
Okay, we, what part of the list?
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you for coming, we appreciate it, really.
And we do do our best to try to, you know, we know, we know dirt roads are difficult in the winter, and, you know, we, we try to get on it, and, and, you know, we actually, we don't use inch and a half stone, but in the winter, we've been using like a half-inch fractured stone mix with the sand, so it doesn't wash off as easy, and, you know, we really try to do it.
They use, they use-
They were great.
They use inch and a half straight stone a couple years ago, and it, it sucked the mud right out of the road and type it in.
And we put some of that on in spring.
Yeah.
But as far as winter maintenance-
Right.
Say it's gonna rain instead of snow.
Right.
You know, years ago, we used to just sand the roads, now we'll put a little fractured stone on them.
Yeah.
So, all the, all the sand just doesn't wash off.
A little bit.
It leaves something there to bite, so that's, that's kind of my theory of that, my theory.
Thank you.
We can, oh, of course you can, thank you. Nobody wants to listen to our boring meetings.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Um, Heritage Commission Trail Sign.
Yes.
I see that.
Vicky Donovan has put forth a request, they would like to erect, um, and I have shown pictures, um, they want to erect an informational sign at the entrance of the Tioga Trail. Uh, this sign will look just like all our other historical, um, signs throughout the town. Uh, the sign will give historical information, background information from eighteen hundreds and how the trail and the two bridges came to fruition. Um, they're going to use the same company that's already done the signs, um, as they already have the, the dimensions and the, um, the templates for them. She's going to work with Woody Fogg to get his assistance on writing up the, uh, information, and if it gets your blessing, she'll meet with Craig and Patrick as to kind of the location and how that will best be visible but out of the way for snow plowing and trail maintenance. And they are going to pay for it out of their budget, and they've provided the quote, the quote came in at five thousand six hundred and eighty-five dollars.
Is that number again?
Five thousand six hundred and eighty-five.
I thought it was less than that.
So, they're using the granite posts and everything, that's why it's-
Yeah, yeah.
Yep.
And they do have enough money in their budget.
It's their budget, and, uh, I think probably the thing does get used, am I right, there are, 'cause our cars here almost, they're in a good time, nine months a year, the people using it a lot.
They're gonna use granite and everything that's low maintenance, and it'll stay forever.
And it, and it kind of blends with everything that we've done downtown anyways.
Yeah.
Yeah, I don't have a problem with it, Sonny?
Oh, I don't have a problem with it, I think it's a pretty good idea, especially if they're coming, taking out of their funds.
Sonny likes anything when they use their own budget.
Absolutely.
So, you go. Um, does someone wanna make a motion?
I'll make a motion to accept the request by the Heritage Commission to erect a sign at the Heritage Trail.
And I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right. Cemetery trustee requests for alternate members. So, they are, I guess-
What is the reason for increasing the?
Well, there's a couple of reasons.
You can come to the podium and speak, please.
We have a, um, a couple of larger, time-consuming things that we would like to do. I'm trying to do, um, a recreation of the historical information of the people that are buried in the cemeteries, 'cause there's really, um, outside of South Road, there's really not a lot of documentation or history of the people who are buried there, so we're trying to recreate that. We're going to do the Reach Across America Project going forward with the, um, the Legion people this year, again. We are also, um, I totally forgot, I should've wrote everything down, sorry. Um, there's just a lot of things that we're trying to accomplish, um, and it's a little time-consuming for three people. And then, looking forward to the future, we would like to reach out to people in the community in an alternate position, and volunteer positions are, I felt, were very good ways to get other people involved, to see if, you know, to create an interest in the cemeteries going forward. I'm also trying to still work with, um, the Perpetual Care Funds, um, and that's a project that I've taken on specifically, so.
But there's nothing that says you can't ask for help from people, correct?
Correct, my, um, we have, my daughter is volunteering, um, with us right now, she helped me do the research, um, on all the veterans' graves in the fall, um, and she is coming to the meetings and typing up notes and minutes to be used for minutes, um, draft copies, um, as we have the meetings, but, um, like I said, I'm just calling her and going, "Hey, can you come with me?"
I would think that you would talk with Vicky at the Heritage Commission, because obviously, if you're doing research on, um-
Town of Belmont.
The town of Belmont, and, and, and these old cemeteries, I would think that it would be the Heritage Commission that you would be talking with.
A jo, okay.
That's kind of what I think, I would think that you would be working with them, because they may have more information about some of these people that are in some of these cemeteries than we do, or at least maybe family connections or whatever, I would think that, I mean, that's just a thought, you know? think that, I mean, that's just a thought, you know.
Like I said, there's a lot of work to be done, and if we could get a couple more hands to help us, that would be great. Because we have had discussions last year about doing a warrant article for next year, asking to increase the cemetery trustees from three members to five. So I guess maybe it's a way to see if it's a good idea to do that or not.
Well, I think if it was me, I would try to ask for some volunteers to help with those projects. And then, if you choose to increase your membership from three to five, that you put it on the line, I would think that that would be to me, but I would do a little bit more research and talk with Vicky. You may not need more people, because if the heritage people, which there seems to be more and more people joining the Heritage Commission, you might, that might be a better resource than try, and, and, again.
And there's a lot of, well.
I know, I would say nicely.
Woody Fogg knows probably, I mean, there's a lot of information to be had by the people that are on that commission right now.
Right.
I would think if I was you, I would.
Well, I didn't think of them specifically, because like, I'm friends with Woody, I've been friends with Ms. Donovan for a long time. I've also lived in this town for forty-eight of my fifty-something years, so.
Yeah, I would think that you would go to the Heritage first.
Okay.
That would be my thought.
And ask, and ask for volunteers.
Right.
Get somebody to volunteer, and then if you said, well, we've got these people that are volunteering, why don't, if you see, then you still see the need, that you need new people on, or want new people on your board, and your board decides to do that, then put it out, and you've got almost people to select from, because you've kind of pre-trained them by volunteer, by their volunteering.
Right.
Yeah, that's, that would be my thought, instead of saying, appointing alternate members. I mean, it's just kind of.
Well, I guess I just kind of wanted you guys to say, yeah, if you can find someone to do it, we would be comfortable with letting you do it. But it's about putting it out there and asking people.
Especially on that project.
Huh?
Especially with that project.
Yes.
Because I did have, at one point in time, I did have a couple people that were interested in the roles, but a couple of different things have happened that have made them not comfortable as yet in volunteering. So, before I do anything about start asking people.
All right, see, I don't look at, when they're an alternate, if they're gonna be.
They're, they're not, they're not voting.
They're not a voting member.
Right.
You understand that? So, they're volunteering, they're volunteering. So when you ask for an alternate, you're asking for a volunteer. Because they're gonna go to the meeting, and if the normal people that were put in those positions are there that night, use the planning board, for example.
Right.
If someone is, is an alternate, they may come to five meetings and never get a say-so, never, just sit there and listen. But if some, a member of the regular planning board, an elected member, is not there, the chairman will ask to up, step them up to the board. So that's what, that's what your alternates do, and that's the way of the world. They don't get a, they don't get a vote, they really don't get a say unless they're in a butter to the property on the planning board. When the planning, same with the zoning board. So I think that, and, so they are really a volunteer. They, they want to get involved, they want to see what it's about, and that's usually the first step to get involved, to say, okay, I'll volunteer for a while and see if this is something I want to do. I have an issue in town, and I'll lay it right out. When someone just comes in and says, I want to run for selectman, they've never attended a meeting, they don't know what we do, they don't know how it's done, and I think you've seen that, because you've started to end a lot of our meetings. So when they come in and say, I want to run for selectman because we need some changes, well, how do they know they need the changes? Because they don't know the history of what we've been doing for a year, or two years, or ten years, or fifteen years. I think that that, you gotta ask for the volunteers first, and you might find that someone on the Heritage Commission might want to volunteer to help you, and then you'd have somebody on both sides of the fence. Because heritage goes along with cemeteries, I think. I mean, not the maintenance, but the thought, but the thought, not, not the maintenance and the upkeep and all that that you take care of. But in the history side of things, I think that's a great idea, I think, we could say.
Because I'm trying to pull both the historical records and do the perpetual care stuff, because I'm using.
But that's also historical, too.
Right, but I'm all using, I'm using the same database to pull everything, so.
Yep. I would go to the Heritage Commission.
Can't, you'll talk to them.
No, it won't.
Talk to Vicky, she's of a good person.
Okay. Awesome. Thank you for your time.
Conservation Commission appointment.
Yes, they have submitted another request for an alternate member, Deborah, I think it's Woodcock?
Woodcock. Yes, interesting, they, she's, they, they or she has moved here from the Pacific Northwest.
Yeah. And have taken an interest in the area, in the natural resources, so if you would wish to appoint.
They lost, they had a couple people get done.
Have they?
Yep, they have had, yeah.
So the number's the same.
So they're trying to build it back up.
Yes.
I'll make a motion to appoint Deborah Woodcock to the Conservation Commission as an alternate member for the term to expire on 2024.
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. UNH Wildlife Study Request.
Yes, we had, received an email from the UNH students. They are doing a project cooperative through UNH and the New Hampshire Fish and Game to quantifying fur bearer and moose populations and habitat relationships across New Hampshire. So they are requesting to put a game camera on, at the Bean Dam. It's a conservation piece of land that the town owns. It is landlocked by other land. I don't really foresee an issue with it. The project will start in June of 2020 and go through, uh, 2020, May of 2025. They're only proposing one location in Belmont. It's just for them to monitor the furry animals that walk by and other wildlife.
I'll make a motion to allow the UNH Wildlife Study to commence with the understanding that we are not liable for the equipment that might be stolen or destroyed or whatever, okay? And this is gonna commence on town lot two-two-five dash zero-one-eight dash zero-zero-zero dash zero-zero-zero. Should I have a second for that?
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Other new business, Alicia?
No.
We'll go to old business.
Uh, yes, Danielle, I is here to kind of give another update on Old Home Day in the camp. I kind of just printed off your emails to them on your update that you sent me last week or the week before, so if you want to come up and kind of.
So we are fully into camp now. We are about halfway through our registrations. We have twenty-four registered and three more that should be coming in today. We have the director and the assistant director that have both started. They're going through the bank and doing the schedules and posters and all that fun stuff to get it all ready. Lifeguards, we have, both of them will be doing training within the next week. Hopefully, they'll pass their training, so we can get them down to the beach. We have had a couple phone calls come in about asking when we're gonna have lifeguards and.
I saw, I saw Janine the other day. You spoke with her about teaching?
Yep, she wants to do some classes once we get that going.
Good.
We have our Old Home Day. We had another meeting just last week, and things are moving along. I'll be following up with the DOT today and the fire department, and seeing where we are as far as those things. Aside from that, not a whole lot going on. Well, we have yoga class starting this week, too, so.
I have a question.
Yeah.
In your camp, you take in money.
What was that?
In the camp.
Yep.
In your camp, your campus, they pay?
Yep.
Who handles the money?
It's going through Catherine in the town hall. That's, if they come in at town hall, they're giving, putting them in my mailbox, and then I send them off to Catherine on a form for her.
Okay, she's gonna handle it?
Yep. And it's just checks right now, so it's.
Yeah.
All paper trail money.
What are you, what are you looking for, for a total for camp?
Fifty. That's, that's where the bus, before we go into having to get any more busing or anything like that, so.
And do we have, are we good for counselors so far?
We're good for counselors. We have two, we have the assistant director that are on right now, and then we have two more that are fully paperwork ready, or no, sorry, three more fully paperwork ready. The rest of them, I have contingent upon the numbers, so we're gonna give them an update next week and go from there. But all in all, there would be nine altogether if we get everybody that we have for the numbers, so.
And in the email, it says you got your lifeguard set up?
If they pass.
Yeah, if they pass, yeah, we're waiting for their certifications, and both of them. We have one going in on the twenty-fourth and one going in on the twenty-eighth, so.
Because you have to have two, am I correct? I mean, they weren't.
For the camp, they'd have to have two. They can do beachfront for up to a hundred and fifty people with just one, but if, in order to have the summer camp there, you can only do a one to twenty-five ratio, so.
That's my understanding, yes.
And they, the group that came forward did throw in a budget for lifeguards, so we have proposed that their lifeguards will be there on the camp days, and then Friday, Saturday, Sunday.
Friday, Saturday, Sunday, unless if it's a Monday holiday, and then they'll do the Monday instead of the Friday.
You say the group came in, you had?
The mom group who put forward this budget for the summer, the parks and rec, you know, they had, you know, put it in there. So we do have it, but, and the camp attendees are also aware that we may not have beach days, and we may, depending on if our lifeguards pass their certification, and we can hire them and they stay. There's nothing to say that they don't go get their life certification and go to someone else who'll pay them more money, so. Fingers crossed, but I think Danielle has made everyone aware that it's not set in stone that they will have two beach days, but we are very much trying.
Everything's gone out as a tentative and hopeful messages, so. All right.
And, well, Chief, I don't know if you knew, but I know we had talked about maybe doing the opening, grand opening, on Old Home Day in the afternoon. Do we still want to do that?
Yes.
I know she's gonna start doing her programs and.
I'm here anyway, it'd be great, it'd be a good time to do it.
I think, and, and.
And the people will be here, so.
Right.
They can walk up, take the tour, and.
And then we don't have to, not that we're cheap.
I got totally dressed by then, I don't know.
Yeah.
And, but at least we don't have to feel we've got to have refreshments up there or whatever, because everything's on the main street, so that kind of, not that we want food going through the building anyway, so.
No, I don't allow either.
No. Yeah. Yep.
They have a kitchen.
So whenever you want to touch base with Danielle and pick a time and.
Food bar. I just gotta hit the check bar, okay, that's all.
Okay, good.
I think that will, so you'll do some advertising, and we'll get it on the website and get it out there, and, awesome. All right, good, all right. PD Spigots install quote.
Yes, a few meetings ago, we had come to the thought that, oh, no, we might not have outdoor spigots for water, but we indeed, indeed did have two. And I don't know who it was, maybe pub, uh, building grounds had requested two more. So Chadwick's Mechanical had given us a quote, and that came in at three thousand six hundred and forty-five.
You're not accepting.
Who knows?
Uh, we're not. I think you can buy a lot of hose for that, and.
We've already got a system that we're already doing, we've, we're watering for not just three.
So that's a.
Yep. That's a little, that's a little high.
Like everything else, huh? It's like everything else, a little high.
Yeah, really. Fuel update.
So I just wanted to touch base, our contract for oil with Irving ends at the end of the month. They are not giving us secured pricing, contract pricing, they're not giving anybody, because of the, in their words, the volatile market right now. So Catherine had reached out to four other vendors, Dead River, and I don't know the other three off the top of my head, and they are also not giving us fixed rate for anybody. So last.
What about pooping?
So last year, we locked in at two forty-seven. Dead River did just tell us that their price, although they're not giving fixed, is four ninety-eight. So no matter what, I assume that we're gonna be at double.
Speaking of fuel, let's talk about the police station.
Yes.
You were on, you were on mini splits.
Mini splits.
Electric.
Where are we with the, where are we with the furnace?
I don't know, we discussed that, and it was supposed to be reach, you were to reach out to Barrett and Chadwick to find out what, what needs to happen.
So that's propane.
The virtue goes to propane. See, last year, the entire building was heated by mini splits.
Right, because we couldn't get the tanks, the whole nine guys.
And propane only kicked on twice, and it was, and it only kicked on twice for about two hours, and then.
So we need to, we need to follow up with that.
Oh, we have, because we.
That's my question, and I didn't get an answer. How much is propane?
Oh, currently, right now, it's two point zero eight seven for the, and I think that's what we locked in. I think we already locked in for the propane.
You're getting hosed. I put you, this town on that propane, and I've got a million gallons out that I handle for my customers, my friends and families and customers, and I walked in last, two weeks ago, at two thirty-five, and the town should be less than that, because you don't pay the tax that a normal customer pays.
So ours is two.
Who'd you talk to?
Point zero eight.
What, yours what?
Two point zero eight seven.
Okay, there you go, that's right, that's right. Okay, because two thirty-five minus the tax.
Yeah.
I thought you said two eighty-five.
No, two point zero eight seven was propane.
All right.
Should we be looking at converting the furnace downstairs to propane?
Well, you know, it, it, it's like a sunny side egg. Right now, the sunny side egg looks pretty good, and you flip it over and it doesn't. I had expected, the people that I have on my propane consortium, I expected it to be three dollars. And I dealt with a lady named Sherri Hunt, as you may have seen it, if you look in any of the records, she's the person that handles, I did handle the town's contract as well. And I called her two weeks ago, and she said, John, they just released it to fixed pricing today, and it was, uh, two thirty-five was what we, we signed up for. And that's a fixed price for propane. And who's to say that next year, though, because the propane trucks come here and burn oil, you know, fuel. They're not burning, the smaller trucks, they use, they power them with their own propane, but they, and of course, they're in oil, and it's Irving again.
And we just put new tanks in. We just put a brand new tank, but then, but the issue is, I think, trying to convert right now, is we've got to wait for our architect to get back to us, you know, we're, we're looking at the bottom floor, it's, you know, and again, how, how long did it take us to get the tank for the propane?
Well, it didn't take us long, there was a little ball dropping in that.
Oh, all right, all right.
Because, number one, they didn't want it to, was in the way, the contractor didn't want it here, and all this stuff, so there was a little one. When, when we were ready, nobody said two weeks before, hey, bring a tank up, and then, yes, they did screw up. Didn't they make a mistake when they plumbed it or something?
They did.
Okay.
Okay, all right. Okay, so the question is, how long do we, well, I guess.
So I was looking at the electric bill for the PD, and right now, we've got five thousand dollars left to stretch seven, seven more months, and it looks like if we track, we're gonna be fourteen thousand dollars over for our electric bill. I called Barrett and I said, two thousand dollars a month for electric seems ridiculous for a brand-new building, that is eco-friendly, eco-efficient, and he's, didn't really agree with me. So he had just, I had requested that he go back to the experts, and we're gonna submit our bills and the invoices, and they're gonna see, you know, what a new bill for that size really should be, and I needed to reach out to either Barrett or the chief, because we should have seen a reduction from when they did switch over to the propane, propane, and we really haven't.
It hasn't been switched over yet. It's still running mini splits. The mini splits provide the cooling to the building.
Yep.
The mini splits weren't supposed to supply.
The heat.
The heat.
Right.
As the, as the initial source of heat throughout the winter. And that's what we got hammered, is because from the January first, until, until we went to the cooling cycle, that was, that continued to be all heating in this year's budget. So that's why we've accumulated such high, high rates of electricity, is because we ran mini splits, January, February, March, and April, and it's cold.
And now we're rerunning them again, because it's hot and we're trying to cool.
Sure, now we're cooling it with the mini splits, as it was more or less.
Designed to do, it was designed, but it wasn't.
Supposed to be the primary source of heat.
Yeah.
For the building, and it wasn't. And, and for some reason, the question I had asked Barrett months ago, what's the conversion here? I mean, the, it should just be able to flip over, come off, to shut the mini split down.
And then the furnace takes over.
And run the propane, you know, the propane that, for instance.
I mean, I have, I have a mini, mini splits, and, and I turn them off, and the furnace, well, the furnace semi takes over. And that makes no sense to me, so we got to get a handle.
If we're five thousand, if you, using your numbers, which I agree with your numbers, with, with the papers. the paper said the other day, you weigh twenty-five thousand dollars.
Yeah, the electric, electric costs are going to go.
And our, our general governments, not including the mill, that's already overspent by three thousand, so, um, that's for fuel, so. We are not going to, we're definitely well overspending our budget for electric and fuel.
So we need to hear from Barrett, who's talked to Chadwick, assuming, has already talked to Chadwick, and find out what needs to be done, and why isn't this conversion gonna happen? Because.
It has to happen.
The water's gonna be here very soon, and you're gonna go back into a heating phase.
Well, and I would assume, have we made a final payment to them?
No, I think we're approaching.
Well, guess what?
So.
We don't make the final payment until we get the heating system straightened out, period. That's my.
I would have to agree with that.
You know, and maybe they'll get it figured out this fall, and it will come down.
No, 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 we'll figure it out now.
We want it done before, we want it done before September.
We want it figured out now and proven that it's, it's an easy shut-on, shut-off.
I mean, I know.
Before we send that final payment.
It's a way bigger building than town hall and the mill, but I don't even spend that for, it's the town hall and the mill and everywhere else for.
Something's wrong.
It's an electronic-type system, it's something I haven't seen before, so I have no idea how it, how it.
It does have an on-off switch, yeah.
You got any thought there, electrician?
Is it worth doing a, is it worth, um, having energies, ever, not, a source come in and do a, um.
Energy audit?
Yeah.
It's correct, you're already generating the ability, you're already having the D, you're already.
Yeah, there are, we're already.
Exactly, it's an efficient building, it's just the fact that it's not converting where it needs. Right, the mini splits drop off.
Yeah, they do.
But right now, you're not running the.
So your mini splits are running, they were running hot for four months, five months now. So it also has a budget where that would be normally your gas, and now it's on the heating, and then you get back to the gas.
I don't think they're eating the meat.
Catherine, did you have something to input? I see your hand raised.
I did, you guys, you okay?
Yes.
Okay, yeah, I wanted to add, just for a limited contact, regarding the PD electric, basically, this entire year, we're just back shy of seventeen hundred dollars a month, and that seasonally has not changed, it's basically like sixteen fifty every month for that.
I can't hear what.
From a total, this contract standpoint, we historically always saw him at Irving, because they've had the best commercial municipal rate for us. We did hear from Tara with our contacts, and they are starting to open up the, it's raising contracts again, so I expect to hear her as more or more.
She had said that.
I, I, I can't hear her.
She said, at the PD, since it's started, the bill has been about sixteen fifty to seventeen hundred, and it has not changed.
For the electric.
For the electric, correct.
And then what did she say about that?
She said, we have had, um, in regards to the other companies that we reached out to for the fuel, historically, we've always worked with Irving and gotten the best rate with Irving.
Because we, we bundled them.
Right, and we should hear back from Tara tomorrow, hopefully.
If she doesn't.
On opening that fixed.
Uh, you call me, and I'll give you Sherri Hunt's personal number, because she's the vice president, general manager of Irving, and I, we can make things happen.
Thank you, Catherine.
I guess the, the, I mean, it's no different than anything else, I would imagine, with all of the stuff that you have running in that building, your, um, your radios, your command center, your.
You have charging stations for radios, I mean, you've drawn, you've drawn a fair amount of power, but also the mini splits haven't, haven't had a conversion time yet.
Right.
So they're running as hard right now as they ran in January.
In January, because they're trying, yeah, keeping.
They're just trying to keep it up now, keep it cool, so.
All right.
So the mini splits are running like normal, it's just that.
They're doing cool instead of heat.
Right, we've never had a conversion period where you can see an actual change in the electric draw.
We need to get that under control, yeah, and, and we don't make the final payment till it's under control.
Yeah.
There's gotta be a, yeah.
We should send, send him an email.
Yeah, ASAP.
Yeah, I have Catherine also working on getting me the invoicing paperwork to hand off to their experts, so that I can.
Yeah, yeah.
Cost what a, cost what that should be, or what a typical.
I'm sure that we're not gonna be the only town that's got this problem, I mean, everybody does, but we gotta try to do what we can do. But you're saying, Mike, it's not worth having an energy audit of that building?
No, so, like, as you said, talking to Chief, your, your mini splits are nonstop.
Yeah.
So if you chuckle down, you'll see a reduction in the electric, and you'll see an increase in gas.
Yeah.
But you're getting, therefore, you would, you would see an offset itself like that.
Right, because it hasn't.
Like you said, you went from your winter, now you're into your summer.
Yeah.
So it's always gonna be that constant building that's running all the time.
Sure.
So you're doing on a track, I don't, I think your building's so new.
So new that it's not.
And you're gonna not get any of this.
That's what I thought, too. All right, all right, I guess we need to work on getting that straightened out, and again, um, I think we probably are in agreement that we will be more than happy to pay for the building when the heating system's working.
The, the furnace down here is actually being serviced today.
Is that what they're here for?
So we'll know right away if there's any kind of problem or whatever, and the furnace at the town hall is August twenty-fourth, so we try to do them early in case there's problems to give your folks time to, to address it.
Okay.
And all tanks have been topped off.
Okay.
Yes, we did top off, so that we're good probably until that early fall, just because we didn't know what the fixed pricing would be, so we said, no, top them off and can wait it out.
Um, and I don't think it's, it's not, you don't just, I, I don't know what the furnace looks like in this building, okay, all right, but I assume you don't just take one out, oil out and put a gas one in.
There are some furnaces, depending on its age, you can do a conversion to it. I don't believe this one will allow, allow you to do that, I'd have to get a, a regimen here.
Yeah, so we really gotta wait till the architect gets back to us, so we know exactly what we're dealing with.
Yeah, plus, the furnace has run well, knock on wood, it hasn't failed us, it's just not very efficient.
Efficient, yeah, 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 all right. Okay, that's, again, there's a process we've gotta go through, we've gotta hear back from the architect and know what we're dealing with, I guess, at this point, all right. Um, do we have any other old business?
I do not.
Okay. At the moment, our next meeting is scheduled for July eighteenth.
I, so, we do have the holiday is July fourth, you obviously don't wanna meet the first week of July, so we can either meet July eleventh or July eighteenth.
Which was the one I said that I had the issue with. What was the date I told you that, um, I forget.
Or we could do the eleventh and the twenty-fifth.
I think it was the twenty-fifth that I had the issue with, I think. No, the eighteenth is good for me, yeah, it was the twenty-seventh.
Are you guys okay with just meeting once in July?
No.
So do you wanna do the eleventh and the twenty-fifth?